All right, good morning. This is North Wacombe Fire District 21, special meeting, May 14. All right, start with roll call on Moose Ansel.
Craig Anthony.
Tony Malillo.
Joel Nielsen.
Matt Rigbert.
Jason Bannering.
All right, any public comment? All right, we'll open the volunteer pension board meeting, and we have the approval of the April 7th.
I'll move. Second.
Move seconded, there we go. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business for the volunteer? Okay, we'll adjourn the volunteer pension board and open the regular board of pensioners meeting with a start and welcome of our deputy chief, Tony Malillo. Would you like to do the honors, chief?
Yes, so, board, I'd like to introduce you to Deputy Chief Tony Malillo, who joined us on May 1st. It's been a pleasure to have him on board. I can already sense that he's gonna be an immediate asset to the district. He's already been an immediate asset to the district. Trying to throttle his enthusiasm a little bit, don't want to burn him out too early. But he's been spending his time getting to know the crews, getting to the battalion chiefs, the lay of the land, the operation. And really, what I asked him to start with was a listening tour. And let's hear about what we're doing good, what we're not doing good. And we'll sit down and take a look at his, you know, look at his job description versus what he's hearing out there, and we'll see what we're gonna tackle first. He's been well received by the crews. People are excited to have him on the floor. They're excited for the future. For the opportunity to hire and promote someone to this level. Thank you.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you.
Any words of wisdom before we go any further?
No, no words of wisdom. Thank you for the job. That's, I'm very excited to have this different challenge. And, you know, like chief said, I'm really encouraged by the warm welcome. That comes from the board and all of the, all the way down to the line staff. It's been great to get to know people a little bit more and start digging into a couple of things. So appreciate the opportunity.
Great. Well, I know we've been talking about getting some relief from fire chief here for a long time, and it's finally come to pass. So, welcome. I'm sure he's got a bucket full of stuff for you to do. All right, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the meeting minutes, staff reports, financial reports, and voucher payroll benefits. Is there a motion to approve consent?
I can.
Is there any questions, comments, discussion? Chief, is there anything in your report that isn't gonna be covered somewhere else?
It, for all intents and purposes, it came apart when being retracted. We had a estimator from an outfit called Fire Trucks Unlimited look at it yesterday. And there is, actually, right now, there's a metallurgical engineer looking at it this morning. That's from the insurance company. We did submit it to the insurance. Because we don't, there was no specific damage that happened. It wasn't run into anything. It was, it was being retracted. And the operator evaluated placing it into service. We looked at what it, what did it need to be a frontline truck? And I made the determination that it was going to cost too much for us to put it in service. It's based on the, if insurance does not approve this claim, and we have to pay for it, the money we're gonna spend to put ladder 61 in service for a period of time in order to get ladder 63 back in service is not money well spent. So, I made the decision that we will rely on mutual aid from other agencies. With that being said, you'll see a surplus for ladder 60, a surplus resolution for ladder 61 coming in the next month or so, by the next meeting. Three is covered by insurance. And B, whether we make the determination to go ahead and get it replaced. I don't even want to spitball the cost of what it's gonna, sorry, not replace, but repair. I don't even want to spitball the cost of what it's gonna cost to get repaired. It would have to be transported to this company's facility in Henderson, Nevada. And that would be by lowboy. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an expensive bill to get replaced.
Oh, is it?
Ladder 63 is 18 years old. So it's coming to the end of its service life.
How old is 61?
Ladder 61 is over 20 years old. It's in 1998. So, that's where we're at with the ladder.
And ladder 61 didn't have water, didn't have a pump?
It is a true truck.
It's a true truck.
It is not, it is not.
Nothing we need.
Nothing we need and nothing we're used to operating with. We've already, we've always operated under what's a quint. So, at least got a small starter, you know, a small starter tank and a pump. It can, it can be cross-staffed by a crew of three. Ladder 61 would take more of what I would call a light force type deployment, where you have an engine married to that ladder. It would drastically change the operation of us at a fire where we used an elevated master stream. It's not something we're, we're used to dealing with. It's frankly more of a big city operation. And that's where we got the truck, that's where we got that truck from. That ladder did cost us a dollar. It was, frankly, we bought it, or we traded for it. Quite frankly, to help with our WSRV rating. But to place it into actual service is just not.
From Bellingham?
Yes. The other piece I wanted to update that I got post-writing that is our capital improvement, CIP project that we submitted to the legislature, capital improvement project, rate request, thank you, was not approved. Turns out none of them were. So, no, but I got that word early this week, Monday of this week.
Probably heard back.
Our project did not survive. Yeah, so. Yes.
All right, well, we might have to figure out a solution to our radio problem at some point. Big sale.
Big sale, we're calling it a sale.
All right, so, in other items in the consent agenda, I will, I will read the amounts. So the total revenue in April is nice, $2,810,185.15. Keeps us out of drawing from reserves. Total expenditures, $938,312.89. Direct deposit payroll, $444,634.90. Payroll taxes, $105,593.88. Benefits voucher, $273,554.33. Monthly expenditure voucher, $111,436.90. Capital projects voucher, $3,093.69. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Synonymous, thank you. And then, I guess we're Mexican Davis to answer any questions, or maybe give a briefer explanation than I could ever do on this no man's land that's been discovered in District 21. And before I talk to the next 15.
By the district and Canada. But there are really, there's no ability for the district, in the district, how and that contract, and that contract might just, you know, reference the levy, the equivalent levy rate. And that would be the contractual payment. So they are covered by a contract. Or having them annex into the jurisdiction. That process can go through an election, like any annexation. But because this is a smaller area, annexation by petition is the more likely method for properties to annex. He'll be method for properties to annex here. That requires 60%, a petition signed by 60% contract, the contract, the process to go, that you'll be required to go through to annex properties is also involves costs. And so, it's a question, it's both a question for the board, so what you will permit, and a question for the property owners to what they prefer to do. But in the status quo, you won't collect taxes from these properties. And your response, you're not required to respond within this area, although the district can respond within these areas if it would like. And there are, the statute says that they should be reimbursed, at least for their fire response, of their actual costs of going into these areas until such time that they have a contract or they're annexed into the district. I guess I'll leave it there if that's a high-level summary. And chief, do you want to speak to the financial impact that the counties discussed with you?
Yes, so currently, that the tax revenue that comes in from the properties that are taxed in that area is a little over $16,000 annually. So, that.
For the fires, service or just for total?
That's the, based on the levy rate, the current levy rate, that's what the, that AV brings in to the fire district. The AV of those 50, there's 52 parcels in there. Not all of them are approved. But the approved ones that pay taxes to the fire district, it's a total of 16, 672 annually.
So they're currently paying, is that correct?
That is correct.
But now that we've discovered this, they don't have to pay anymore, and we would have to pay them back?
Correct.
I believe it, it's a statute of limitations of approximately three years, but because of way tax cycles work, it's really two years of a refund. Believe it or not, this happens more frequently than you'd imagine, and there's a whole statute designed for these administrative mistakes. And so there will be a refund. It sounds like the assessors have kind of agreed with our analysis. And, and with that refund, there's the ability for the district to do a refund levy. So to collect the amounts that you have to refund from your future, from properties in the future.
Which would be assessed to the whole district, or just that area?
Not that area. Yeah, the whole district. So you would have an additional levy amount for next year of the current, of who now exists in the district's properties to make up that refund that you make. Let's say it's $30,000 for two years. That $30,000 would be something additional you could collect from your taxpayers.
And that can be done by a motion of the board without any other crazy things to happen?
Yes, that would be done at the, when we set the levy rate, where we set the budget.
So we would have the statutory authority to adjust our levy rate to collect that amount from the remaining. We have been providing service to that area, however.
Correct.
So it's not like they haven't been benefiting from the fire district, correct?
Yes. I can't speak to whether we've had incidents at those parcels, but I can tell you that they've been in our, they're in our coverage area. They're in our block files.
Yeah, we don't, like, oh, don't go over that line.
So when? So if there's a call today, we're going?
Yes, sir.
Because we haven't changed anything.
Correct.
Does anybody out there know they're at risk of losing their service?
If the board were to tell me to stop, were to order us to stop providing services, I'd counsel against that. But I'll do what you tell me. I'm not gonna direct our crews to stop providing service until that order came. I believe there's a chance for us to make, we need to make the homeowners aware first, the property owners aware first, and then give them, give them all the information and let them figure out what to do with it. One thing I would say, and Mr. Paxton, correct me if I'm wrong, is yes, we have the ability, you know, we need to refund this money if that's what they, they choose and move forward with an agreement. That's gonna cost staff time, and I would highly recommend that we add an administrative fee to the levy rate that we, that we offer these people if they want to continue forward with individual contracts. That's, that's gonna take staff time to do, and I don't think, that's above and beyond what our office does. That's what the county assessor's office does, not us. So, but I, I also feel strongly that we should really only move forward on the petition method. I don't see why the district should pay money. It would cost more to put this on the ballot for the district than we would get out of it in annual revenue. So, I think the petition method's the most logical method to move forward. That might take a, having a public meeting and talking to the property owners all at once, so they understand how this all works. I'm sure there'll be questions. But that's, that's how I think we should move forward is first by sending the letter, which Mr. Paxton and I have, we're pretty close to a final. We got one initially from, from the law firm. I actually shared it with the assessor's office, because I wanted them to know what we could potentially be sending out. They had one of their attorneys send some recommendations, and and I just have the last couple lines, I think, to go through to get it nailed down.
Is there an established administrative charge that the district can stand behind?
No. We don't have anything set like that. We've never done, to my knowledge, we've never done anything like this.
So, one path forward could be that as a landowner, I'm gonna get the choice to enter into a contract with the district and pay an administrative fee for some period of time, and then at the same time, I'm gonna do everything I can to get you to include my parcel in your district. So going forward, I'm gonna be paying the levy rate without an administrative fee.
Correct.
So one path, I'm paying more until I can get off that path, and then I'm back in the district, everything's fine. I would think that if I was a landowner in that particular case, I'd be much more amenable to the fire department if you're telling me all this without necessarily saying, and if you don't do it by September the 2nd, this is gonna happen. I hope that we can go through a kind and friendly correction to this administrative issue and be done with.
100% agree. I think, yeah, this is, I think we're, I think both the district and the property owners will have the same interest in getting this fixed quickly, I would imagine.
And to the point about because of this mistake, our levy rate is wrong this year. And that's why we get to fix it next year. Because of the 1% that we go through, the assessed valuation of the district has actually less than in the last calculation.
Yes, those properties represent just a little over $24 million worth of our assessed valuation.
Have they not been included in the AV then?
They.
They have been.
They have been.
They have been. So, I mean, it currently running is if they're part of us, and they're being taxed as part of us, and we're assuming their assessed value as our overall assessed value of the district.
Correct.
And we've been receiving funds for them
Yeah.
ever since 2006 or 2011, whatever the magic date is.
1949.
1949. But legally, we're all only on the hook if somebody wants to raise their hand and say, I want my money back. There's a legal limit to how far back you can go.
Yes, sir. This, this year and the last two years, so.
So there's no harm to the district. The only harm is if I, as a homeowner in, in the district, found out that I'm having to pay an extra 12 bucks next year because somebody in Wacombe County made a mistake when they drew a map. Other than that, the district's not gonna be out any money.
So, moving forward, we send all the property owners a notice, yes?
Yes.
Explaining what's happened and what their options are. And then do we hold special meeting and invite them to come and talk to us, or?
That's what I'd like to do, is have, have a one or two evening meetings where they could come and myself and probably the board chair would be here to answer questions. We'll see the assessor there as well.
From 1948?
And I did ask them if they, and they said, well, yeah, we'll check the schedule, which, I know what that means.
Yeah.
They created this problem, so I'd like to see them there as well. So that we can have them, you know, have their questions answered. And I, you know, maybe good idea to work with Mr. Paxton on a one-pager that we can pass out to them. You know, that I haven't done this, and I haven't talked to any chiefs to have, so the, it sounds like it's more common than it's not, but, but I haven't encountered this before, so.
So, are we missing anything here, Mr. Paxton, as far as moving forward with this?
I think when you consider the petition method, it's helpful to understand some of the process. So, the first step is you have a petition that gets submitted. That petition has a map on it, right? That, and it has that map, 60% of those areas need to be signing this petition. So the first question is, is okay, how big of an area? Are we only considering a, an annexation of this entire area? Or would we consider a piecemeal fashion? But let's assume it's the entire area. Then there's a, gonna be a need to manage that, those need to manage that, those tasks, and a tasks. And I think a question for the board would be, who forever included in our boundaries? And, and who pays for that cost if they're, you know, and who pays for that cost if they're, you know, because there certainly will be a cost of going through that process. So it's some, that's a question I would have for the board in terms of how do we, if we are going to do a petition for annexation, how do we, how is that process going to be managed?
Is there an opportunity to have the county take care of this, since it might have been there? This isn't a scripter there, right? This is a.
It's called a manifest error.
Since it was potentially their manifest error, is that an option?
Yeah, if the county would agree. I don't know that we have, like, legal leverage to require them to. I would, I don't think that we do. So if they would be willing to participate in that, I think we, it's reasonable and fair. As far as I know, this error was. As far as I know, this error was, um, was not the district's, you know, fault that it got, that these taxes started being assessed without our knowledge or consent. We never adopted a legal description of the district to include that area, so, um, but it, it'll be up to you guys to, to negotiate with that with the county.
And who ultimately discovered this problem? Was it the county that?
The county, yes. And I believe it was the county auditor's office that discovered it. And alerted the assessor's office.
So the, the county most likely has all the maps, the county most likely has the property descriptions and the boundaries and the taxing parcels and the history. Wouldn't it make sense, sorry to use that word, uh, that they move this forward on everyone's behalf? Is, is that an illogical request?
And perhaps one with the assessor that was incorrect. And the two departments not talking to each other until two thousand and twenty-five on this issue, uh, i- is frustrating.
So what other options for service do those residents have besides us?
Nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's deep into the district, there's no.
All right, any, any, any other comments, questions?
The, the landlords will be mo, they have to have fire protection. They have, their mortgages depend on them having insurance. And insurance requires them to have fire protection. So, I mean, unless their rates are really going to go up. So they're going to be motivated to fix this too. They have to be. The last thing we want to do is to do anything that mistakenly ends up with twelve landowners in and five lander, five out. Because then one of us has got to take a black paint can and put an X in front of those five driveways, never works out, or we have a real nice sign that says leaving Waukesha County Fire Rescue District. So I think reasonable people will do reasonable things. So getting the sixty percent if you have to, we, we got to get them all in. You just can't do part of them. Because you put the troops on the engines in a tough spot trying to figure out who gets saved and who doesn't. The county EMS has been collecting the county EMS money. So I call the county up and say, hey, Mr. EMS manager, what are you going to do for these people because we, we're not providing them service? And yet they're paying into the county EMS fund. It's just, the rabbit hole gets bigger as you go down. So I have high hopes that the chief will be able to get the folks out there to take the easiest path forward. The it irks me a little bit that I'm going to have to pay twelve bucks next year more because of a clerical error. But I think getting into a dispute with them about can you get your money back or not is just a waste of time in our process. So good luck, chief.
I, I will reach out to the assessor's office and have that discussion about how the process can get paid for by their in-house. I mean, that's something they do all the time.
Right, they have staff that can do.
So I, that's.
Obviously have staff that found it. They shouldn't, I mean, we would have to start all over and basically ask them for all the information that they already have.
I'm happy to do.
I'm hopeful that they would see that that would be the smart thing.
I'm happy to do the laywork and contact the property owners, answer any questions over the phone that I can, but we need them to do the, the CIPA piece and do the, you know, help us with the the lot, the lot descriptions or the, the property descriptions for the boundary review board. And if they can grease those wheels, we can do the rest.
What, what period of time do we have to rectify this? And is the expectation that it is ours a hundred percent to fix?
View of the county, it's ours to fix. It's not their problem. That's why they called me to tell me.
What, what period of time now do we have to fix this before we start accruing financial liability for issues that can pop up?
There's no, we, we are, we are bound to, to inform them that we've discovered this anomaly, this mistake and offer them the refund. Should they take, should they, should they, they will not be charged taxes in two thousand and twenty-six, none of these, any improved properties on these fifty-two parcels, they are now on a, on a list that will not be charged taxes. So if they choose not to get a refund for this year or, or take any of the past refunds, then as far as I'm concerned, they have fire service, they're going to have fire service irregardless. They've paid for their, their service through the rest of the year. We need to do an agreement with them in two thousand and twenty-six. If somebody comes immediately and says, I want, I want my past taxes back, then we need to have, prior to that, we need to have a contract for services in place and a board approved administrative fee attached to that so that we can, okay, if you, you want your refund, if you want fire service, you know, which we're highly, we're not, we, we will not back out, but this is what you need to sign to, to continue for your, you know, your mortgage and all those things. Uh, we need to have all that in place beforehand. Saying we should be able to. August? I would say, get all those pieces in play. Every, if I, if I try to think how quickly I want to do it versus how quickly I can reasonably do it, I'm going to say August. And then, uh, I don't know how long the petition method will take. It may be that we have to charge, um, you know, do individual contracts through two thousand and twenty-six. My view would be as if we are moving through, if we are in the petition method and we're moving through the process, maybe we drop the administrative fee for two thousand and twenty-six and have to pay the regular levy rate and, and get it completed in two thousand and twenty-six.
And then that's, the petition method is for annexation, correct?
Correct. But, but I don't want to do is to put an annexation vote on the ballot because now we're paying to get, we're having to pay to put that in all the publications on the vote for fifty-two parcels, which they're not even fifty-two individual property owners. There's probably forty property owners in those, amongst those fifty-two parcels.
But there's, there's no requirement that we do that.
No.
There, you can, uh, voluntarily go to the process of annexing in the fire department and we want all of you. Or option B that you're, it's not on us, we don't have to go through a process, have an election, they can just stay on their own. So there, there's, um, leverage is a hard word, but leverage with a small L on everybody's part, part to figure this out.
I, I agree, uh, it's all or nothing. Uh, we don't want to manage fifteen contracts every year.
And if for some crazy reason, they say all of them or majority say no, and they call for service, then we charge them the true cost of providing that service?
Go off the DNR list, yep.
So, I mean, it, it might behoove us to have an estimate when we have the discussions with them of what if, that, well, yeah, you can, you can call and it's going to cost five thousand dollars for us to come put out your illegal fire.
That'll be an interesting discussion because as a resident of the district, I'm more interested in the COB available for the use of the district residents than renting it out to the, the seventeen parcels or whatever. So, or I don't view us as a pay-for-service kind of department.
We don't want to get into that.
So.
Again, that's.
That'll be an interesting discussion, we go, if we have a discussion at the board level sometime in the future, worst case scenario is say, okay, are we going to provide them service and, and charge them a fee when we go? Right now, my view of the world is, no, we're not going. I don't want, I don't want, uh, A Card number sixty-one out going out here. It's a tough world and they have a lot of great ways to fix this as property owners. Let's go through and get it fixed. Otherwise, you're going to sit there and say, I think I'll roll the dice. I won't pay any money, I won't get in the district. And if somebody has to come out, gee whiz, I'm going to have to pay, I guess.
All right. Do we need any action from the board today?
No.
Good luck, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Paxton, any other closing comments for us or, I'm assuming that you're available to assist the chief in either crafting the, the letters or whatever we need to send out to the property owners?
Yes, I think we've covered everything.
All right. Thank you for being here today and, uh, enlightening us on this issue. All right. Next, uh, commissioner meeting reports. Anybody got anything?
Well, City of Blaine.
Okay.
The meeting, attended a meeting last month when they made it clear that they've started the process to eliminate one of their UGAs and talked about, we even signed in the paper, about going to Simiyamu area for medium density, I think they said, uh, housing, uh, the UGA out there. I'm extremely interested to watch this process go through because the Simiyamu area has water issues, sewer issues, uh, response issues, response time issues. There's a lot of things involved here that, uh, uh, it'll be interesting to watch them go through the process and then how, understand how they're going to handle it. It won't take much, uh, to have.
How they got from there to, to where we are now, when it seemed like they weren't feeling very positive, feeling very positive about that, do you have any idea?
No. Well, the idea, we hear them talk about it from time to time, is the, the TIF capturing the increment, the increment of, uh, of assessed valuation for twenty years, which absolutely uh, cut us off from a revenue flow. Sometimes I look at the financials and I think that we probably almost get as much in mitigation fees annually for new development as we get for a one percent increase, so, that add on into what is preparing more and more to be a pretty heavily populated area between Simiyamu down to Beach, Birch Bay, there's a lot of people over there, so.
It was for medium to high density as well as manufacturing was part of the proposal. I have no idea what manufacturing they could be referring to there for that area.
I, I believe the manufacturing.
Without wheels.
The acreage that they designated for manufacturing is actually the area around this station. So residential only on the west side over by Simiyamu and the, the, um, the area that surrounds this station is what they designated for manufacturing.
That's good.
That's what I read.
Okay.
Don, anything?
Hi, the community breakfast was a great success. And I want to thank the local for funding it and a shout out to the fire science students who were a tremendous help and all the volunteers who showed up to clean and set up and serve and, and then clean up and get everything returned where it was borrowed from. A special thanks to Jenny Sand and Kat Stewart and Cody Bowen for all their help getting it planned and organized and, um, I really appreciate that it took a village. It was a great team effort.
I'm still monitoring the Birch Bay Community Advisory Committee. We had a report from Birch Bay Water and Sewer. Interestingly, their recommendation was if there was a potential to expand the UGA in the Birch Bay area, it would be more towards the refinery than up on Point Whitehorn, which is the area that, uh, the City of Blaine is looking at very carefully. To provide sewer to that Point Whitehorn area would, would require a significant amount of investment and pump stations and upgrade of the existing line that runs along Birch Bay right now, um, because it's almost at capacity. So if you had, you know, another whole area and try to push all of that stuff down the small pipe, it's not going to fit. So, uh, um, and on top of their planning for, uh, future sea level rise, um, which will ultimately put that sewer pipeline underwater and it's got to be moved, um, in the next twenty or thirty years, otherwise. An example they gave was like, um, a, a normal flow for them is like seven hundred thousand gallons a day. Um, in November of twenty-one, where we had King Tide and flood and washed roads out, they, because of intrusion from the excess water into the sewer system, they hit four point one million gallons and their system is not designed to handle that capacity. The infrastructure in this community is not just isolated to the fire department, it's, uh, water and sewer and roads and, and everyone else, so. Our committee re, is recommending to the county upgrade to the, or rewriting of the pump plan is, is to support Birch Bay Water and Sewer's recommendation that the UGA boundary for the Birch Bay community be that south area closer. I think it would be, um, kind of the Bay Road, um, not probably as far as Kickerville, but in, in that vicinity. It's closer to their treatment plant. It's uphill from the treatment plant. That would be way more cost effective and fewer pump stations and, and less overall long-term maintenance. To have the, the development go closer to their.
Make sure they used to right now.
Yeah. I've, I've seen three or four different versions, so we'll go from there. All right, that's, uh, all I have. Local one oh six, anything?
So.
Matt, did you have a report?
That's tonight at seven o'clock, it's the Yell County meeting.
That's what I thought. But thanks for.
Thanks, Kelly. I feel included now.
Right. Thanks. Uh, one oh six.
Yes, thank you. Uh, with the promotion of, uh, Mr. Malillo, we have an opening for vice president at the union level for the county, Scott Brown filled that role. So I am filling Scott Brown's role as the unit chair. And tomorrow night we'll find out who the new number two is. Uh, we have a vote tomorrow. Uh, just to reiterate, thank you for the pancake feed, for all your support and the board's support, setup and help, and it was a success and it was fun to all get together. Uh, we have the ski to see coming up, the local one oh six has a couple teams racing in that. And we've already been included in one meeting for Sean Ward's memorial, so we are willing to help in any way we can.
Yes, thank you for reminding us of that. I guess we should have that in our announcement section, uh, for this meeting as well. So just, Scott is no longer part of
Correct.
This unit's.
Scott is now in charge of all county units for their local one oh six.
And is that the position you held before?
Yeah. Yeah. So, Scott will be still doing our contract, leading the contract negotiations for us as well this year as...
Everybody else.
Everybody else, all the other county units.
District 1, South Wachem, and the Port of Bellingham
Yeah.
and Linden all have their contracts up this year.
Yeah. So, Scott's going to be a busy man. So, we wish him well.
Yeah. And then you'll have an election to fill your position.
To fill my position, and I stepped up to unit chair.
Okay.
So, yeah, Scott will still be assisting me, and we'll have two or one more new face officially on 106 North Wachem.
Is that through nomination then?
Yeah.
And that hasn't opened yet?
It's opened. We have so far one person put in, and we'll see if anybody declares tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire marshal report.
Yes. Start off, Chris Holter and I attended training last week over in Leavenworth through the International Association of Arson Investigators. Class I took was on the psychology behind interviewing witnesses at fire scenes and doing interviews of suspects, you know, for like possible arsons and also prepping for court testimony. Chris attended the basic class for fire investigations. So, it was the first step in him becoming a certified fire investigator with Washington State. So, the next step for him would be written tests, practical tests, and courtroom testimony. And because he's got the basic class out of the way now, he's all fit, tested, we can start bringing him out to fire investigation scenes, which is exciting. Get some more help with that. Just some information that's come down from the city, like the council meeting. The Lincoln Muse, the council decided to change the, what it's called. It's the, what they can put on the property for Lincoln Muse. It was basically a single-family. Now, they've gone to multifamily, so they can make it a little more dense. So, increasing the number of residents they can put in that piece of property up there, just up north of the station here on the west side of Odell Road at H Street. Family Care Network, their building has now been signed off. They're ready for occupancy, and they're going to start moving in here soon. They're planning on opening up the clinic somewhere around June 16th is their projected date. It's kind of exciting. We have a doctor's office here in Blaine again. Looking forward to that. Just like with us, the city is also coming into some financial difficulties with less traffic coming across the border. They're losing out on a lot of sales tax. And they projected there are going to be several million dollars in the hole in a couple of years. So, they're going to start trying to figure out which projects that they can start, you know, cutting from their budget. And the one they're looking at right now is the street improvements on H Street. They're dumping a lot of money into that, and they're going to see if they can delay the contracts. They're checking into that right now and see what kind of legal ramifications there are to break contracts there. Other than that, they approved their final plat for the ridge. It's going to be another 10 of the town home units. So, it's going to be 40, 40 residents up there in their last, it's their Division 5 area that they're going to be adding on to next. So, they're progressing with more, more building up there at the ridge. And that's about all I have. You have any questions for me?
Anybody? Thank you. All right. Unfinished business. We have Birch Bay Station 63, and we had a RFQ, RFB, which one?
You want me to start Chief or...?
Yeah, sorry. Yes. So, yeah, we had, sorry, there's a, you saw an RFQ in the packet.
Yes.
As we discussed last month, Dave Ralston has come on board to help us, and I'm going to turn it over to him to just give a brief synopsis of where he's at. He's drug me.
I just, real quick, I'll just, I worked with the district about three years ago helping out and negotiating their current contract with the local. That was three years ago. And so, she contacted me here last month in regards to their station project at Birch Bay to look at it as a project manager for it. I understand all of the work that he's trying to do, and the stuff is very, it's time-consuming. So, I bought to go ahead and help. My experience on some of that, I did, was part of the Geneva Station, where we rebuilt that station back in 2001. And then I've also done some, some work when we had Station 28. We did an add-on to building there. So, I've got some experience in it. I'm no way an expert in any of that. But as a project manager, you know, you're more of a facilitator and looking at stuff. You've got to be able to recognize stuff. So, I think I can, I can do that with that. The first thing that we did here was, as Chief mentioned, we sent out a request for qualifications as required by the state auditor to comply. What's unique about that is we don't actually get any bids from anybody like a dollar amount. We actually have the opportunity as a board to choose an architect that you want to enter into a contract with. That went out last week. We sent it, I sent it out to five different architects here. I think there were three in Bellingham and two in Seattle. I had one in the architect firms in Seattle has already notified me. They're too busy. They're not going to be able to bid on it. So, but locally here, we've got some interest. And that process will close for submit for qualifications, I think, on June the...
12th.
June the 12th. Then we'll have an opportunity to review the qualifications, whether, how we do...
Any questions? No, this one. So, cost estimates will come after the architect was selected and decides what it is.
And that's where we would ask them to give us a timeline when they would expect that. Yeah, so, and with that, there'll be several options. There could be whether we put a modular unit in, whether you remodel the one. There's a lot of different things we'd be able to get some cost of estimates on.
Great. Well, it's nice to see that project moving forward. And thank you for...
Thank you.
Coming in and helping us out. And hopefully, the troops can see we are pushing the ball forward. Anything else, Chief?
Thank you for letting us reach out to Chief Ralston.
Yeah. Nice to have you back. District 4 annexation.
There's been no movement on the District 4 annexation. It's not even on the, it's not even on the agenda for city council. You can interpret that any way you want to. District 4 has sent a letter to the mayor asking to enter formal negotiation regarding the 60% question in the 1997 agreement. And what, what is the, we need to clean that up, and how do we make that determination? I'm sure Chief Ralston's interested in how that'll work as well. So, we're going to, so, we will, the letter went out last Thursday. I will reach out and schedule a meeting with them, and we'll get started on how that looks. I'm sure it'll be an interesting conversation.
And that is through their attorney, Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Quinn.
Any questions on that?
No.
Any other unfinished business? New business? Any new business? Do you want to have any items? Correspondence is in our packet. Our next board meeting is Friday, June 20th, because June 19th is the holiday.
It's already in my calendar somehow. I'm not that good. I anticipate it.
New hires, new hired chiefs, newly promoted captains, and new firefighters. So, it will be a family event, a Class A event. Be light refreshments. We'll have a cup of coffee for you, Commissioner Anthony.
What time?
6:30. We'll have tea and water for everybody else.
18, 6:30. How exciting. Been a while since anything like that has happened.
And then also wanted to point out, Sean Ward's memorial service will be held May 31st at 1:00 p.m. at North County Christ the King Church in Linden.
Is there any whom from the board, any of that?
We're good to go. The state's helping out. The unions doing a lot of heavy lifting for that.
And just, we saw the correspondence from the state for the fallen firefighters to include locally state.
22nd, Sunday, June 22nd. She'll go on the wall at the state. State firefighters memorial.
All right. Next meeting, we'll have Station 63 update, hopefully approval of selecting an architect.
Hopefully a recommendation to the board to...
Right.
Interview a contractor.
Chris?
Sir?
In that vein, is it too soon to start talking about the budgeting aspects of that? Will we have enough information by our next meeting to discuss that somewhere in there as well?
No.
No? Okay.
No, that was my, my question is, we won't have any idea on...
Till June?
Well, probably. I mean, you're talking about the cost of that project?
How are we going to sustain it?
Yeah. That will come once we get an estimate of what our options would be. And it would probably be like, we can afford this, we can't afford that. We can do this, we can't do that.
The uniqueness of it is that the district has to go under... Bidding, we've got to select an architect to work with, and then they will provide that information. And until we actually have an architect to let us know how long it would take to get some estimates, we just don't know yet.
Great.
I hope it's sooner than later. I've, you know, but realistic, maybe I...
Next year sometime.
Maybe we go, we hire them in June, maybe sometime by the end of summer. I would hope that we could have some kind of preliminary numbers to move forward with for budgeting.
Which would fall into 2026 budget planning anyway.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And what else do we want? We got anything more with D4? I guess that's...
Want to let us know...
Maybe it's to let you know when anything happens, yeah.
We'll know about the ladder.
Yep. Ladder 63 might be a good...
Update. And you're recommending surplus things, ladder 61. So, we'll have a resolution to surplus. Anyone else got any thoughts or ideas for next meeting?
Oh, update on the no-man's land.
Thank you.
Thank Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny.
And then we have a need for executive session as we prepare to go into negotiations with the local this year. So, that is for RCW.
Should we say noon then?
That's a good idea.
Let's go for 20 minutes. We'll take, if anybody needs a brief break here, we'll take a five-minute break and then go into executive session and return at noon. Fair enough? So, out of the video, just a little... Need of more time for executive session. We had to reconvene to extend executive session for another five minutes. So we'll go ahead and be back.